Good afternoon. I'd like to call the October 28, 2025 Regular Board Meeting to order. It is now 5:00 PM. The members have an agenda before them. Is there a motion to adopt or amend?
I make a motion to adopt.
Motion by Mrs. Hoyes, second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to inter-executive session for Personnel and Legal Counsel? Excellent. Motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous. That was remarkably smooth, guys. We'll be back in about an hour. All right. Let's get this shit on the road. All right. Do I have a motion to exit executive session?
I make a motion.
A motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve Personnel B. 1 through 9 and C. 1 through 3?
I'll make a motion to approve Personnel.
A motion by Mr. McCall, a second by Mr. Usherwood. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, welcome, everybody. Sorry to keep you waiting. We had some stuff going on that ran long. Dr. Lowe, as usual. It's hard to control, but we appreciate him. If you're able, I'll ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
No, no.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it. We appreciate your patience. Our executive sessions rarely run long, but we had a lot on the agenda today, so thank you for being patient. First up on the agenda is recognition, and I'd like to ask Mrs. Sarah Taylor to come
Good evening. I'm Sarah Taylor, Associate Superintendent of Student Services, and tonight, we get the honor of, this evening, we have the privilege of honoring individuals who dedicate their service, have been made a lasting impact on our board and our community. It is with great respect and appreciation that I now turn the floor over to Superintendent Young, who will do a recognition for Mr. Phil Betsy with his exceptional service.
Thank you, Sarah. It's my honor tonight to recognize Mr. Phil Bettes for an incredible 45 years of service as Board Counsel for Forsyth County Schools. Before I even move on, 45 years he's been service. Let's give it up for Phil. Mr. Bettes is a lifelong resident of Forsyth County, a 1972 graduate of Forsyth County High, that you may know as Forsyth Central today. He went on to graduate cum laude from Mercer University in 1976 and later earned his law degree from Emory University in 1980. He later founded his private law practice and has since earned widespread respect for his expertise, professionalism, and fairness, becoming a trusted advisor to clients and community leaders. Mr. Bettes has always had a deep sense of service to Forsyth County. He served as a magistrate judge, the charter president of the Coming Forsyth County Bar Association, and the founding chair of Leadership Forsyth. He has also served on the boards of the Coming Forsyth County Chamber of Commerce, the Forsyth County Parks and Recreation Board, and the North Georgia College and State University Board. As our counselor at the Forsyth County Schools Board, Mr. Bettes has played a vital role in every school acquisition and expansion over the past 45 years. And when you think about the number of schools that we've built and the amount of land that we have had to acquire over the last 45 years, it is even hard to imagine. And he has been a part of every single one of those real estate transactions. Mr. Bettes, you may not know, is also an accomplished author. His recent book, The Little Book of Belief, captures his reflections on community, faith, and the people and stories that have shaped his life in the place he calls home. Mr. Bettes takes great pride in knowing that the sixth generation of his family will attend Forsyth County Schools in a building he helped to close at a real estate transaction not that many years ago. He's not only been an outstanding legal counsel, but also a mentor, a steady voice, and a friend to many. His leadership, professionalism, and love for this community have been, have made a lasting impact that will be felt for years to come. I should note, too, in 2022, he was inducted into Forsyth Central Alumni Association Hall of Fame. So on behalf of the Forsyth County Board of Education, we sincerely thank Mr. Bettes for his 45 years of dedicated service, his leadership, and his commitment to Forsyth County Schools. Please join me in showing our heartfelt appreciation for Mr. Phil Bettes and his outstanding service to our schools and community. And Phil, if you could come down, we have a little something for you.
We have something we would like to present to you. Well, thank you, Lord.
Do we have any of Phil's family or friends who came to support him tonight? If you would stand up and be recognized? Now, are you gonna get a group picture of us?
Right here, three, two, one.
All right. You have to either throw it back to you or throw it to Michelle.
Now, I am throwing it back to Michelle Dugan. So, Michelle, you've got the alumni.
It is freezing in here.
All right, good evening. I am very glad Mr. Bettes did not share that he may have first encountered me in mock trial when I was in high school. So he keeps those good secrets, which is very nice. So we're proud of him. We have an opportunity here to share about our students who graduate and then they become alumni. So our Alumni Spotlight Series has highlighted and celebrated some of our students that have gone on to do really incredible things. And it could be college, sometimes it's career, which is really, really exciting. And in this particular case, I'm going to show you a video with a gentleman who graduated Lambert High School, class of 2024, and he won an award called the Hinton Youth Entrepreneur Award. He won $10,000. And this is a scholarship if you have questions you can ask Dr. Valerie Lowe about, but each high school is awarded one $10,000 award for celebrating somebody's great idea, that entrepreneurship. And so I'll show you a video highlighting Nathan now.
I'm Nathan Bagacy. I graduated from Lambert in 2024. I had good teachers that really encouraged what I was doing, good coaches who encouraged what I was doing. One of my football coaches actually encouraged, I was cleaning the Lambert concession standing in exchange for a banner on the field, and like, one of my coaches saw me, and he was like, hey, there's this award, you should apply for it. I was like, no way, no way I would win. And he was just like, no, I think you're a good contender for this. Just apply, just apply, see what happens, it's not gonna hurt. I was like, okay, okay, I'll apply. And his encouragement was the only reason I won that. So that was, that was the support that I got from, from some of the best teachers. The Hinton Youth Entrepreneurship Award, and it was a $10,000 award, you know? So I like to set massive goals, knowing that I'm probably not going to achieve them. But it allows me to work towards something much bigger than myself, something that seems impossible from my perspective and just with the resources that I have. I would say, set big goals, expect that you're not gonna hit all of them, and just adapt from there. I think that's, that's the best advice I can give when it comes to goal setting. I started my business as a sophomore going into junior year, like, that summer, just running around with a pressure washer banging on doors, hey, give me some money, I'll solve your cleaning problems. And it just kind of grew from there. So my company, P&amp;B Commercial Clean, is a full-service commercial cleaning company. We do pressure washing, soft washing, we recently added full interiors. We work with mid-sized property management companies, general contractors, state investment trusts, companies like that. And we do final cleans for their quick service restaurants, Chick-fil-A's, Whataburger's, Raisin Canes. I don't think a business can thrive long-term without integrity, and that's something that I've tried to maintain with myself and with my guys. So quality control is massive. Showing up on time is massive. Delivering what you said you're gonna deliver is one of those things that you have to do. But I like to look at my business as something that provides solutions and jobs. And I'm still building up to where I can have, you know, multiple full-time people, and I hope to continue growing and become a legitimate, mid-sized employer later on in my life. But I think pouring into your community, pouring into your people, it's, it's super important to me. Anything community service-wise, whether that's volunteering or mentoring, or just trying to build, build a company that can use resources to invest in people's education and their personal growth, that's important to me. After leaving Forsyth County Schools, the overall feeling, looking back, is very positive. Everyone was overall very, very supportive, and I really believe that Forsyth County Schools is set up to produce some of the best individuals in Georgia and probably the country.
All right, so we are so proud of Nathan. You heard that business started his sophomore year of high school. How incredible to have a little bit of money. Saw his smile get real big when he said $10,000, to be able to pursue his dream. I will also say what I heard him repeat that I think is really important, it's just those life skills, doing what you say you're gonna do, showing up on time, integrity. He didn't mention math, he didn't mention science, those are very important, but those life skills are what helped him be successful. So thank you for letting us share that. And I have the honor, oh, thank you to Nathan, yeah, you can clap for Nathan. And now I have the honor of welcoming the most proud principal ever, Ms. Kim Oliver, from Denmark High School, as we highlight our dames.
I think you're in for a treat tonight.
So thank you to Dr. Young and the Forsyth County Board members for spotlighting Denmark High School. As Dr. Dugan has mentioned, I'm Kim Oliver, the proud principal of Denmark. At Denmark, we work to make sure that students feel a connection to each other, to adults in our building, and to our school. In fact, it's one of our goals for the Continuous Improvement Plan. Tonight, we want to highlight how some of our students connect to others through Unified Football, Unified Flag Football, Our Best Buddies Club, and our Spotlight Production Series. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to our team, starting with Mr. Patrick Hoefield.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Hoefield, this is my friend Mikey Ramirez, and we're just gonna talk a little bit about our Unified Flag Football team. So I'm standing in tonight, actually, our coach, you can see on the screen, Eric Carryon wasn't able to make it, so I'm just filling in for him, and Mikey's helping me out, so. The club was started by our former SOAR teacher Mitch Felker and former Denmark student Tyler Smith, with a clear purpose that was to encourage social inclusion through both practices and games, bringing together students with and without disabilities on the same team. Unified Flag Football nurtures friendships, empathy, and mutual understanding. It carries forward Denmark's mission of belonging beyond just the classroom and making sure every player has a valuable role. Students support and uplift one another while coaches create practices that help each athlete build skills and confidence. By working as a team and pursuing common goals, stereotypes disappear and genuine friendships develop. Every player gets the opportunity to shine, both on the field and in life. And at this point, I'd like Mikey to say a couple words about our team.
Hello, my name is Mikey Ramirez. I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. I am the Vice President of Unified Flag Football. What I like about Flag Football is the word unified. We bring special education and regular education kids together to bond, create everlasting friendships and relationships that they will remember for a long time. And I thank you for allowing me to do this, and I thank you guys for giving us the opportunity.
Thanks, Mikey. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Angie Jaeger, one of our Inspire-Grow teachers and Best Buddies Club sponsor, along with Doug Peters, Deputy Director of Programs at
Hi, my name is Angie Jaeger, and I'm one of the Inspire-Grow teachers at Denmark High School, and I'm also the faculty advisor for Denmark's Best Buddies chapter. I'm honored to be here and to tell you a little bit more about our Best Buddies chapter. We became a chapter in 2021 with the goal of every student to feel valued and included at our school. In 2024, we were awarded Most Outstanding Chapter for the state of Georgia. Best Buddies is about making meaningful friendships between people with and without disabilities. Best Buddy was, was not just a social club, but also we have a few, of course, we have a few social events. It's about creating an environment where everyone feels connected through Spirit Days, service projects, and one of our favorite educational initiatives is Spread the Word to End the Word, which we promote respect and inclusion. Now I'd like to introduce Doug Peters, the Deputy Director of Programs, where he'll talk more about the mission of Best Buddies International.
Hello, my name is Doug Peters, as Angie mentioned, and I'm the Deputy Director of Programs for Best Buddies in Georgia. I have the honor and the privilege of working with 60 schools throughout our state, including 15 elementary, 15 middle, 24 high schools, and six colleges throughout the state. As Angie mentioned, we end the social isolation for students with intellectual and developmental disabilities by building one-to-one friendships, growing student leaders, and creating more and more inclusive student culture. It is peer-to-peer, not mentoring, students with and without ADD participate together and being matched in one-to-one friendships, and planning inclusive events, which Charlie will share immediately after this slide.
Hi, my name is Charlie Shaw. I'm the president of Best Buddies at Denmark High School. I've been a member of Best Buddies since I was in sixth grade. These are, as you can see on the screen, these are some of my favorite moments from this year so far. I don't know if you, oh, you can't see the mouse. Up here in the right-hand corner is us at BBLC Best Buddies Leadership Conference in Indiana. Here, here, over in the bottom-left corner is a pump we made for our Homecoming event this year, and then the other two are from Homecoming this year, where we got to go out to Chipotle and go to Homecoming together. These moments are why I'm in Best Buddies, getting to spread kindness, love, and inclusion here at Denmark meets the world to me. Thank you guys so much for this amazing opportunity. We are truly honored to be recognized. Now I'm gonna pass the mic to Ms. Summer Heisner, lovely Ms. Summer Heisner.
Good evening, again. Thank you for having us tonight. We are very honored to be here. Like Charlie said, my name is Summer Heisner. I am the director, teacher, of our Spotlight Series class. We started in 2024. With some innovative scheduling and utilization of some in-house resources, Denmark was able to launch this idea. At the beginning of the journey, Kurt Grisel, who's our finance department head, looked me in the face and he said, you know, theater's for everyone. And combined with my conviction that all students deserve to achieve their own excellence, our Spotlight Series was born. The photo on the screen shows our Addams Family cast in action. They're supported by typical peers playing the ancestors in the play, and they're the young men and women in the, in the white. This was an excellent production, and we actually received a really good grant from Forsyth County Arts Association, which was applied for by our parent association. So I'd like to bring up, oh, I'd like to recognize the people that support our class, our paraprofessionals, our like assistant directors, and this would not happen without them. Our peer facilitators give excellent one-on-one help, and then our typical peers who support us from the theater class really take our performances up to the next level. I'd like to introduce Mr. Quaid McCollum Strother, and he is going to talk to us a little bit about why he likes theater.
My favorite thing about theater is singing, performing onstage, and meeting new friends.
And of all the characters you've played, Baloo, Uncle Fester, you were Simba in The Penguin Project, what's been your most fun part to play?
Uncle Fester.
Any reason why?
Because he's the creepiest and kookiest uncle in the Addams Family.
Thank you, Quaid, very much. Starting with The Jungle Bunk in 2024, advancing to The Addams Family last year, there's huge excitement and anticipation for this year's production, because there's no people like showpeople, we're doing curtains. So please join us on March 19th or 20th at 7:00 PM in the Denmark Theater. So thank you very much for this opportunity. We appreciate your recognition so much, because our students work so hard. But finally, our students have some advice for everyone here, and we ask you to just be happy.
Sing the favorite song, and we'll sing along. We can write it every day with the things we do and say. Just be happy, happy, just be happy, happy. Da-da-da-dee-da-dee-da, da-da-da-dee-da-dee-day. Just be happy, happy, just be happy, happy. Da-da-da-dee-da-dee-da, day. Now just be happy, do a dance now, just be happy. Make a smile now, just be happy. Laugh a while now, just be happy. Let the music play, let the music play. Hurry, wash away, let them wash away. Let's go, wait till sea, we got all to see. Our world was meant to be, our world was meant to be. Just be happy, happy, just be happy, happy. Da-da-da-dee-da-dee-da, da-da-da-dee-da-dee-day. Just be happy, happy, just be happy, happy. Da-da-da-dee-da-dee-da, day. Laugh a while now, just be happy. Do a dance now, just be happy. Make a smile now, just be happy. Laugh a while now, just be happy. Every chance along the way, every moment through the day. Make a choice to hear your voice reach out and say, okay, let's play. Just be happy, happy, just be happy, happy. Da-da-da-dee-da-dee-da, da-da-da-dee-da-dee-day. Just be happy, happy, just be happy, happy. Da-da-da-dee-da-dee-da, day. Laugh a while now, just be happy. Do a dance now, just be happy. Make a smile now, just be happy. Laugh a while now, just be happy. Yeah, 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 yeah. 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 Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thank you again so much for having us. So just in conclusion, we hope that you recognize tonight, what, every day, it's a great day. What? To be a day. Yay!
You guys wanna get up and get in a picture with us?
Yeah, picture time.
We're gonna get up here, then we're gonna look out there, then Ms. Needham's gonna take a picture, and Dr. Dugan will take a picture. Nice job.
All right.
All right, get in here. We're gonna get in here. Miss Dugan is waving, that's who we're gonna take. Squeeze in here, guys. Squeeze over here.
So there's your mama.
Well, guys, thank you so much. That was amazing. This is gonna be a special night for us. It's the first time anyone's ever come to perform for us here, so thank you, guys. We really appreciate that. You guys did great. All right, before we get into the business portion of the agenda, we're gonna take a short recess, so this is a great time for you to make a run for it if you wanna go home, or you can stay with us and hear the Finance Report with Mr. Hamel. All right, welcome back, everyone. First thing on our agenda is Item 7, Public Participation on Agenda Items. Mrs. Mayo, I believe we have no one signed up?
No one signed up.
Excellent. Next item is Agenda Item 8, the Consent Agenda. Have the members received all the documents in question? Any questions, comments? No? All right, so if not, I will seek a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Second motion?
Motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous. Next up is Item 9, Presentation and Discussion Items. First up, my personal favorite of the night, the Finance Report with Mr. Larry Hamel,
Yeah, you gotta have big shoes to fill after the happy song, Larry, so.
I don't have the, what was my favorite rhyme when I was a small kid, Walt Disney World? It's a Happy, Happy World, or It's a Small World? There we go. Unfortunately, I don't know that by heart. So tonight, we're gonna talk about the 2025 financial statements instead. Who could be more happier than that, right? And we're always thinking about Goal 5, Operational Excellence, when we talk about And we're always thinking about goal five, operational excellence, when we talk about the financial statements. So we started the month off with about $112.5 million in cash equivalents and ended the month about 98.5. We are starting to see small chunks of money come in through the month of October. In addition to what we've got in September already, but we haven't had our first big drop. We are waiting to hear from them this week. Deborah Sexton over at the Tax Commissioner's Office to see where we are on that. Last year, she told us the first big drop didn't happen until November 1st. Of course, November 1st is a Saturday, which means it's possible it'll be on my next Tuesday if nothing drops this Tuesday, or this, actually yesterday. But this Friday, if nothing drops, it'll be next week before we see that big one. But with that being said, we had about $109 million last year at this time for September 24. First two graphs, kind of just point these out. Cash position and fund balance position, as you know, we used about $8 to $10 million in fund balance already, beginning of this year, for the mash burn expansion and some money that we sent for debt service. So you'll see that our cash position is a little bit lower than it was last year and a fund balance position a little lower than it was last year. Now, those are funds that we reserved out in the previous years for these different functions. Now, the reason we reserved those funds out was those funds were money in excess of the 15% fund balance that allowed us to do these kind of projects going forward. So that's why you're seeing lower numbers this year versus last. On the revenue, we're at 14.7. We're a little bit behind what we were last year. Last year, we were about 15.208. Again, we're a little bit behind Avalorm collections compared to last year, just in terms of where the money's dropped. And if you just look at here, you can see it's a little bit behind on the income collections based on the 25 data that we have to look at. And then, of course, we've got the table graph, just kind of give you the idea that QB still is a large chunk of the money and Avalorm was another big chunk we got this month versus Taro Avalorm. Then we look at budget versus actuals. You can see we kind of start off the year a little bit ahead of schedule, but as we get into September and October, we're starting to get a little bit behind. And then, of course, that's because the majority of the money that is Avalorm tax coming this time of year hasn't quite hit yet. We look at the expense side of things. We're at 23.28.33 versus 26.81 last year. And as you'll look under year-to-date, under transfers of other funds, you see that $12 million number and then this month, the 1.2. That's some of the reserve funds that we moved to other funds based on the reserves we set up in the prior years. A large chunk of that $12 million is mash burn, by the way. Then you can see we're a little bit ahead of schedule compared to last year because of the funds we spent. Some of them have been reserved. And again, instruction, 73% of budget, typically it's going to be the largest portion of what you spend each month. As you can see, budget-wise, we are ahead of schedule. Again, it's because of some money we spent that was reserved funds. If you look at debt service cash analysis, this time last year, we had about $1.3 million in debt service. We're a little bit ahead of schedule there in collections. Debt service LGIP account, we've drawn that down to make payments back in August. The SPOX 6 account, we had about $26 million. We're at 7. Again, SPOX 6 is getting to the point where it's drawing down pretty quickly as we finish up the cluster we just finished and get ready for a cluster next year. In total, we got about $10.7 million. Last year, we had about 28.5 in these funds. The special regional funds are about where they need to be this time of year. They're normal. If we look at capital projects and school nutrition, last year, we had about $22.7 million on capital projects. Again, we spent a lot of money with the clusters this summer to close up the clusters, so our cash balances are a little bit low. And school nutrition was about 19.3. We're at about 17.8 right now. If we look at the investment summary, year-to-date so far, we got about $28 million left. And by the way, we pulled a big chunk of that 28 already, about 27 for October. So we're down to probably a million dollars right now in the LGIP fund for general fund. We were at 26.7 last year. Again, debt service balance is low because we just made payments in August. Fund 600, last year was about 15.7 versus 16.3. Again, we're drawing pretty good interest on the accounts on there. And the Fund 352 SPOX, we're at 7 versus 26.2. Again, we just got done paying a large bills for the cluster that we just finished. In total, we have about $51 million versus about 69 last year this time.
Larry, real quick on the SPOX 6, when did we start collecting that?
You mean SPOX 7, if it passes?
No, no, SPOX 6, the one, the one we're currently in. When do we start that? When do we start collecting?
So we should be done June, excuse me, December of next year. So if you go back five years, it's 21 when we are collecting.
Okay, thank you.
As you can see right now, I take that back, April 22 when we start collecting, or 22, excuse me. If you can see now, we are right now at about $208 million collections in total. And at the rate we're going, we're collecting a little bit over $5 million a month and that'll carry us until next year.
Larry, based on that, we're still looking at 36 months early in that.
Yeah, right now, we're about three months early is what it looks like. On cash disbursements for elementary schools and receipts, that's normal for this time of the year. Right now, we have about $5 million. Last year, we had about 4.8, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule on that. Both middle school and high schools, activity is normal for this time of the year. We have about 2.4 in the middle schools, about 2.5 last year. We have about 7.1 in the high schools right now. We have about 6.7 last year. So all the schools have a little bit more money than the previous years. In total, there's about $14.5 million. We're ahead of schedule. The breakdown, pretty much the same as it was last year, off by one percentage point for each of the categories. And that's the financials for 2025. Any questions?
One question.
Sure.
Will we get our, our big revenue drop here in the next month or so as the idea replenish the LGIP account?
Yes, so typically what happens is once we get that drop, we'll start sending money over to, back to LGIP. And because usually it's such a big drop, it's like totally, typically it's in the 200-plus million dollar category. And there's a limit how much we can send at one time. Typically, we send two or three different transfers over a couple of days to get all the money over there as much as we can.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you, Mr. Hamel. Next up is Dr. Michelle Dugan with EastBloss accomplishments. Dr. Dugan is a regular here.
Good evening. So usually I'm here with Matt Wark, but I am here solo tonight. I know my better half isn't here, but I am excited to share just a few EastBloss updates in addition to our accomplishments. Of course, all of our work, our planning, our accountability is for the board goals and strategic plan. And this EastBloss proposed and also previous EastBloss really touch all areas of those goals. As a reminder, EastBloss stands for Education Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. It is that penny tax that has been in existence for many, many decades in Forsyth and has been approved by voters. We are, of course, proposing another EastBloss. This is EastBloss, the seventh iteration going forward. And so tonight, instead of Matt or I speaking to you directly, we wanted to share a video that is just information for our community, for our public, so they can just know a little bit more about EastBloss.
This November 4th, Forsyth County voters have the opportunity to extend the EastBloss penny sales tax for Forsyth County schools. EastBloss is not a new or additional tax, but an existing penny tax that is currently on its sixth iteration. EastBloss is a penny sales tax that goes 100% directly to education to fund capital projects with the school district. Examples of projects consist of the refurbishing of buildings, technology, safety and security systems, HVAC and more. EastBloss 7 will continue the penny sales tax that everyone pays, including residents and those visiting, working or passing through Forsyth County. Between 30 and 40% of the tax is paid by non-residents through the purchase of gas, shopping and dining and restaurants, which contributes to the cost of maintenance and expansion of the Forsyth County school system. EastBloss allows the district to upgrade, build and maintain its 43 schools without having to use funding from other revenue streams. 100% of the promised past EastBloss projects have been delivered. This includes important safety improvements, new facilities, fine arts and sciences, school buses, technology and even debt reduction. So between now and November 4th, you can visit the Forsyth County School System's website where we have an EastBloss page dedicated to financial transparency. Please let us know if you have any additional questions or concerns by using the email below. Thank you.
So again, it's one thing for us to tell you. It is quite another for us to be able to show you a little bit more about that EastBloss overview and what this truly looks like in our community with our kids and for our schools. Of course, our best source of information is our website. So we recommend that our families go to the website if they have any questions. I also want to thank our families. We've had a few advisories. I've had many folks reach out just to ask clarifying questions about what EastBloss is and really specifically for their child's school, what projects have been completed in the past and what might be proposed for EastBloss 7. And we've been able to better, just improve our communication to our families based on those questions. As a reminder, we are in voting right now. You can see that this week, there are multiple options for voting locations. That information is on the Forsyth County Voter Registration and Elections Office website, along with our website. So that information is here and of course, voting, Election Day will be on November 4th. Are there any questions?
I just want to say that one of the accomplishments is that the SPOX 6 passed in '22, or we started collecting in 2022. And that has allowed us to pay cash for all of our projects and we also are paying off debt. And we're not acquiring new debt. And why is that important? It's because we're paying off the debt and over the next 10 to 13 years, this school system can be totally debt-free. And I think about that for my son. I want my son to come back and live in this community. And if he can come back and the taxes are lower because the school system is debt-free and we're paying tax, it benefits our kids. It benefits our grandkids down the road. And I think that, you know, for me is, that's a huge accomplishment. I searched online. I could not maybe find something but about anywhere in the, in the United States where our school system is paying cash for projects and not going in debt. But like the only one in the school system I can find that is doing that. And so that's a huge accomplishment for the school system, very conservative accomplishment for the school system.
Absolutely.
Yeah, now I'll add to that, that the things that this board and, and previous boards have been able to do the last three or four years, you know, lowering the mileage rate three separate times, passing a 4% homestead exemption, cutting spending, you know, reversing a lot of the growth trajectories in our budget. I mean, this last budget cycle, we had our locally controlled revenue, our spending growth was 1.5%, which is, I think, has never happened and it's half the rate of inflation. So we've, we've done a lot and EastBloss is what makes that possible. Without that revenue source, then we have to look to other revenue sources for necessary capital projects. So I think it's a, it's a win-win really for our community, especially, you know, 35% or so of it is paid by people who don't live here, which that's a direct offset to our residential taxpayers. So I think it's a good thing. Questions? Comments? Thank you, Dr. Dugan. All right, next up is item 10, action items. We have four action items on the agenda. I'd like to welcome up Dr. Josh Lowe, another regular for the 25-26 student calendar.
All right. Good evening, 25-26 student calendar. This is a copy of the calendar that, oh, I'm sorry, that was presented at the last meeting. This one has the update that would reflect the High School Online Learning Day as well as the adjustments to accommodate the graduations. I will say that this will be on the website, which is, Dr. Dugan and her team are working to ensure, ensure it's ADA compliant. And I would propose that this be considered for adoption.
I recommend the amended 25-26 calendar be adopted.
Excellent. Is there a motion to adopt the 25-26 student calendar? Motion by Mr. Usherwood, second by Mr. Grimes. Any discussion, questions? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Lowe. Now I'd like to walk up, welcome up the better Dr. Lowe, Dr. Valerie Lowe for CTAE Geometry for Construction Initiative.
All right, good evening. Just a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention and one that requires board action from the CTAE world, just some different credits that our students who are enrolled in pathways are going to be able to take advantage of. The first one of these, really all of them, you've seen this probably before, but there's a lot of happening in Georgia around making sure that the pathways that we're offering are high demand and that are realistic to our regional commission that we work on. So I wanted to remind you of that. Also, because of the work that Georgia is doing, the clusters have been realigned. So I thought this might be helpful for you guys to have to kind of see every pathway that's available for us to offer statewide. So the three areas that I wanted to kind of go over tonight, CTAE Plus provides that fourth math, science or ELA credit for certain pathways that are aligned to a lot of those workforce situations. The academic career pathway are really hybrid pathways between career tech and some academic courses. And the third one is the one that required, requires board vote is around construction for geometry. So that only impacts one of our high schools, but it allows students to complete the geometry math graduation requirement if they've completed the carpentry pathway. These courses and all this discussion are the, meet the requirements of the technical college system of Georgia only. So if a student is going to a Board of Regents school, those would not be an acceptable credit for their math or their fourth other academic area. So this is kind of what it looks like for CTAE Plus courses. So an example of that might be an AV technology and film student also getting a credit for dramatic writing for a pathway. So those are some examples there. The academic career pathways and the CTA Plus courses have kind of been on the books. And the construction for, for geometry is the one that we're going to ask that the superintendent make a motion to approve the use of that, the geometry in place if they've taken the construction pathway.
So before I do, just one, one quick question that I know the answer to, but for the, for the sake of watching. When those courses, those CTA E Plus courses you talked about, don't count towards a Board of Regents school like a University of North Georgia or a Kennesaw or a, or a Georgia Tech, say? We do, we do a really good job, I'm asking, of counselors and making sure parents are aware of that before they sign up for this course. Could you talk a little bit about that for us?
Yes, and a lot of these, in many ways, will be, you know, for maybe credit recovery or for situations where a student might not have been successful in that. So there is a lot of counseling on our end. This is something that we kind of use on the backend if a student were to need these credits. So it's not something that we put out, you know, in, in terms of recruitment for pathways or things like that. They do count for their graduation requirements for, obviously for the intents and purposes of what we're working with our students on. But in terms of the, the equivalency at a, a two-year school versus a four-year school, and a lot of that has to do with articulation agreements that the technical college system has in place. So our students do take some additional career tech credit with them, along with their graduation requirements.
Okay, thank, thank you, Valerie. And with, with that, then I do recommend for approval that we add geometry to our CTAE Plus for the carpentry pathway.
All right. If there was ever a class I took that I asked myself, why am I taking this? What am I ever going to use this? It was geometry. And then I went to work in construction and they put me out in the field to do survey and I was like, thank God I took that geometry class, so it's good. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the CTAE Geometry for Construction Initiative, CTAE Plus and Academic Career Pathways?
Make a motion to approve the CTAE Geometry for Construction Initiative, CTAE Plus and Academic Career Pathway as presented.
A motion by Mr. Grimes, second by Mrs. Hoyes. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Lowe. All right. Next up, we have a couple of policies that have sat public for review. I'd like to ask Mr. Derek Hershey to come on up.
Hello, everybody. Let's see, which one are we starting with? G A?
G A C.
G A C.
Thank you for keeping it in the same order that we have it. Mr. Hershey.
Very welcome.
Yeah, we've had issues with that recently.
Let that beard keep going and you're looking a little bit like your mentor over there.
Mr. Hamel?
On your left.
I'm trying.
I think you should go short.
I'm trying. All right, so this has been posted for 30 days. I do not believe there have been any rec. I do not believe there have been any recommendations for changes, so wanted to ask Dr. Young to make the recommendation for approval.
Yeah, I recommend for approval the changes highlighted in policy GAC.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the changes to policy GAC, staff involvement in decision-making? Motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. Usherwood. Any discussion, questions? All in favor? Unanimous. Policy GAD.
For policy GAD, very similar. Sat for over 30 days. There's been no comments, questions from the public. So again, I'd make the recommendation, Dr. Young make the recommendation to the board for approval.
I recommend for approval the changes made to policy GAD.
Is there a motion to adopt the changes to policy GAD, professional learning opportunities? Please, sir, let him, let him finish. He's a little slow reader. Motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mr. Grimes. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Hershey.
My pleasure.
All right, next up on the agenda is points of information. Have the members received all the documents in question? Any questions or additions? Mrs. Mayo, do you have anything? No? All right. That brings us to item 12, public participation on non-agenda items. We have one speaker, Mr. Jared Chrishell, who needs no introduction here.
Thank you. The fight for sanity never ends. Even as we celebrate unprecedented peace in the Middle East and the return of innocent hostages held by barbarians for years, it's looking like New York City is going to be led by a socialist terrorist sympathizer, just 24 years after the Twin Towers fell to Islamic extremists. So even as I appreciate the good things happening in the now, I try to temper my enthusiasm. But when the school board is hitting homerun after homerun, it's hard not to get excited. I'd like to take most of my time today to thank you all for your great work. Having attended these school board meetings every month but one for the past four years, I've heard a lot of promises and a lot of plans presented. A cynic might just assume most of these would fade out and be forgotten, but the follow-through demonstrated in the last working meeting was amazing. Mr. Hershey's presentation on how we're recruiting new talent into the school district and building leaders from within made me incredibly jealous. I started my career as a strapping young programmer and 28 years later, at the same company, I don't see the next generation coming in the front door. And I regularly endure the pains of leadership dropped in from the outside. Forsyth County schools are doing HR exactly the right way, with exactly the right perspective, from internally recruiting the superintendent all the way down to building opportunities for paraprofessionals. The work on East Floss presented by Dr. Dugan and Mr. Wark was also inspiring. It actually got me off the couch today to early vote in favor with my wife. The taxationist theft point of view resonates with me, but given the high degree of competence, responsibility, and efficiency demonstrated by the East Floss projects in Forsyth County, I just had to offer my electoral support. Not to put too fine a point on it, but it often seems to me that Forsyth County schools run more like a private business than a government agency, and that's impressive. Mr. Evans and Mr. Shirley's update on the alert system and the news about the stop-the-bleed kits in every classroom, well, that was just icing on the cake for me. This kind of proactive work to mitigate low likelihood but high impact incidents aligns perfectly with my philosophy of every citizen being prepared as a first responder. If there's ever an opportunity to help staff train on the stop-the-bleed kits, either as an instructor or as a test dummy for them to apply tourniquets to, I'm happy to volunteer. I highly recommend the board look into medical training courses that include force-on-force scenarios where skills are practiced under the artificial pressure of a non-compliant patient and other realism distractions. That all being said, I do have one quibble. I understand the public participation guidelines were set up to mitigate the very raucous and well-attended cultural war meetings, and in those circumstances, I think they work very well. However, I'd like to propose to the board that for those instances where there are less than five public speakers, each one be given five minutes rather than three. One might assume this is completely self-serving since I'm often the only speaker here, but if it was simply for me, I'd ask the board to designate me as a senior public participant and give me 15 minutes each time. All kidding aside, I am incredibly impressed and grateful for all the great work going on in our Forsyth County schools, and I look forward to even more meetings where I struggle to think of anything I would ask you folks to do differently. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time. And again, I would love to buy lunch for anyone who disagrees with me.
Thank you, Mr. Chrishell. All right. That includes, concludes the program for tonight, so at this time, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mrs. Hoyes, second by Mr. McCall, I believe. Any discussion on adjournment? No? All right, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.